To the Haffman Bay Planning Commission. We're going to open up the meeting and we will start with a pledge of allegiance. New room, adjusting to a new room. Adaptable and flexible. So with that, your local?
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Mr. Benjamin?
Here.
Vice Chair Holt?
Here.
And Chair Hernandez?
I am present.
Excellent. So Chair Hernandez is at a location as described in our agenda and Vice Chair Holt will attend to meet tonight for us.
Very good. Welcome, Rip. First item is approval of minutes from November 13th, 2018.
I move we approve of the minutes.
I move we approve the minutes. Second?
I will second, but I did have one requested suggestion. In the discussion of the Mariners Church item, the conditions on the coastal development permit reflected the modification that we, that they're responsible for maintaining their bank stability. But the minutes, as they were presented in short form, were considered like vegetation, that aspect of landscaping. So I'd like the minutes to reflect that bank stability that showed in the conditions, if that's acceptable to the maker. I'll second.
I will accept that motion.
I'll second.
Okay. And I was absent, so I will be abstaining. So with that, can we give a vote?
Yes.
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 Yeah.
Great. Thank you. Okay. All right. Moving on to our next item, public comment. This is the time of the meeting where we can receive public comments on items not on the agenda. I do not see any speaker cards for any items not on the agenda and do not see anybody jumping up to speak. So with that, we can close the public comment period and move on to our study session. Jill.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to this study session on the Local Coastal Land Use Plan. This is the draft chapter for natural resources. And I just want to remind everybody in the room, this is not a decision-making meeting, this is a study session. And that said, we do have a couple logistical items that we'd like to cover. We need to pay attention to any potential conflicts of interest that individual commissioners may have. Under the Political Reform Act, the commission can oversee general plan and local coastal program updates. However, when it comes to matters concerning specific parcels on the maps, individual commissioners may need to refuse themselves. So to simplify this for tonight, here in the basics, there'll be public comment periods and public, you can describe, discuss, bring forth any topic, any property, any policy that you wish. But when the item comes back to the commission for discussion, we will check in with the commission and see if any of them are intending to discuss any particular parcels or items on the map. And we'll do a double check and make sure we don't have any conflicts. If there is a conflict, then we'll give the commissioner a chance to excuse themselves for that portion of the discussion. And we can clarify that if anybody has any questions. Also, we will have multiple presenters, including our consultants, staff members, as well as our planning commissioner, Commissioner Benjamin, who is on the Local Coastal Program Subcommittee for the Planning Commission, the big group. And we can add into content. You can see our meeting overview. This will be a two-part discussion. And we're going to begin with the biological resources portion and begin by talking about the maps. This disclaimer is reminding everybody in the room that maps are a very important planning tool. They are not the final word and it's always the foots on the ground that matters. And the policies provide the procedure for structure and protection. We are expecting feedback and input. We welcome it. I do want to note that we already are starting in a Radish sheet. That was an attachment to the memo that went to the commission. And it's something that we'll be building up as people notice things and bring them to our attention. And with that, I'm going to go ahead and introduce our first speaker. I'm very happy to introduce Gary Deggie. Gary is an environmental scientist and he is the vice president of the Huffman Broadway Group. He has an excellent presentation and so without further ado, we will turn it over to Gary.
Thank you, Jill. I just want to start off by telling everybody how happy I am to be a part of this effort. I've been in environmental consulting for about four years. And I had done some work in Haffman Bay even before I moved here with my wife 30 years ago. And 30 years ago, I remember talking to my wife and saying, you know, there are some real issues with the LCP, especially in the national resources area, and I just wish I could get the city to hire me to help fix some of these things. And lo and behold, I have to watch out what you wish for because here we are. But I'm really pleased to be a part of this effort. I think it's an important bit of work. So our scope of work was basically to update the habitat maps and the environmentally sensitive habitat maps, the ESHA maps, for the planning area and to contribute to biological aspects of the natural resources chapter for the update. And our approach to doing this, basically, we started off by waiting to get some high-resolution LiDAR mapping from the county and using this to create base maps for our effort. And on these base maps, we did photo interpretation work in mapping habitats. We relied on some past studies to give us information. We used other sources of information, Resource Agency data, for instance, and there was a period of ground truthing. So we started, basically, the work that had been done by other consultants on the LCP was information that we used as a starting point. And I want to say that, this is a point where I want to point out, that much of the first version, early versions of the LCP was basically taken from, and this is one of the things I noticed 30 years ago. It was basically taken from the San Mateo County Local Coastal Plan. And so contained within the LCP were a number of things that were relevant to San Mateo County, but irrelevant to the city of Haffman Bay. And those things, we decided, need not be included in this update. And by that, I'm talking about some species that occur on the base side, not on the coast side, or making an effort to do planning associated with native stands of moderate pine, which are important on the south coast of San Mateo County, but not an element to be looked at in Haffman Bay. So we used information from previous studies and in particular Huffman Broadway Group and myself, we reviewed over 60 biological resource evaluations and wetland delineations that have been prepared by other biological consultants working for the city over the last several decades. And we mapped information from those studies. We use the local resources that we have here in town. And in particular, I'm talking about some very knowledgeable scientists in our community that were never tapped for information when previous versions of the LCP were done. And we've tapped into some of that resource here. And we also hired a subconsultant that is known to some people in the room, Dr. Mark Jennings, who is a species expert on some of the threatened endangered species that are relevant to our work. So we looked at, there was Resource Agency data that we used. In particular, we got federal register information about critical habitats for listed species. We used information from the California Natural Diversity Database. And there was an extensive exercise in ground truthing of the maps by a Huffman Broadway Group biologist familiar with the community, and that was basically me. And we did this ground truthing effort, staying on public property and public access ways. So what we mapped were the habitat maps in the planning area and the ESHA maps in the planning area. And this is where I want to bring up the Coastal Act definition of an ESHA. This is probably the most important definition that we need to be aware of. The Coastal Act itself defines an ESHA as "any area in which a planter animal life or their habitats are either rare or especially valuable because of their nature or role in an ecosystem and which could be easily disturbed or degraded by human activities and developments." And in our planning area here, these Esches include habitat types that are environmentally sensitive and they include habitats for special status and unique species. So let's look at the habitat map. Most of the habitats here were based on looking at the mapping that had been done prior to us being involved in the property and in the project, based on photo interpretation work, based on these high-resolution LiDAR base maps that we had, and followed with ground truthing by the biologists from public areas. And this is how we mapped marine environment and dunes and sea cliffs and coastal scrub and agricultural areas and grassland areas and various forest types. And it's also how we mapped riparian corridors along creeks and watercourses. And these were specifically mapped, looking at the outside limit of riparian vegetation on the base maps and/or in areas where there was no riparian vegetation based on the top of bank of the water course. And then I want to talk about wetlands for a second, because we treated these differently. We took a different approach, at least. It's basically not feasible to delineate wetlands as part of a citywide study. This is a very intensive amount of work. Nearly all of the wetlands, and on our habitat map, they're referred to as freshwater marsh. They were mapped as only, well, they were based on wetland delineations and biological evaluations that have been prepared by other consultants over the last several decades. So the mapped wetlands are basically only general locations where the wetlands are located. And it's a general location for two reasons. One, wetlands are a dynamic system and these boundaries change over time. And then, secondly, many of these delineations were conducted prior to the advent of GPS. So the wetlands that we mapped here are basically not geo-referenced. So I would maintain that there may be some areas mapped as freshwater marsh of wetlands where they're mapped as wetlands, but there may no longer be wetlands there. And there may be some other areas that are mapped as wetlands that are not mapped as wetlands that actually do have some wetlands. And therefore, I think, I want to caution everybody to use the map of the wetlands as basically a red flag that clearly denotes areas where wetlands are likely to occur and where further study like wetland delineations are necessary in order to get a refined boundary. I would say that there's a number of locations where they had never been studied before and where the wetlands were pretty obvious. They could easily be determined from aerial photos and with ground truth from like drive-by on public roads. And there are a handful of those that were mapped as part of our effort. So going to the next slide. We looked, in mapping Esches, we decided we needed to look at two different categories of Esches. ESHA and potential ESHA. And areas that we mapped as ESHA were habitat types and areas with well-defined and significant biological resources, areas that were in deep restricted open space, or even some areas that the city may eventually propose a mitigation banking effort. Potential ESHA were those areas with a potential to support sensitive habitats or special status species, but were in need of further study to get an accurate boundary to map them as an ESHA. And so let's go on to the ESHA maps. The first, basically, we decided we needed to do two ESHA maps. We started mapping all the habitat types and all the special status species Esches on one map and it just got too confusing and we ran out of colors and it was just, we had to split it up so that it was more readable. It was two separate maps. And so we have a habitat ESHA map and a special status species map. And then because we'd split them up, we did a summary map showing ESHA and potential ESHA. And I'll show you all these maps. So on the habitat map, the, on the ESHA habitat types. The habitat types were mapped as environmentally sensitive habitat areas, where the marine environment, dunes and sea cliffs, coastal terrace prairie habitat along the edge of the coastal bluffs, riparian corridors that had significant biological resources, and wetlands that were protected by open space deep restrictions. Other areas that are in need of further study were mapped as potential ESHA. And these areas included the remainder of the riparian corridors and wetlands, all the man-made ponds and artificial impoundments and intermittent and ephemeral watercourses. And then on ESHA map related to special status species, let's define what a special status species is. Those, these are species that are either state, they're either listed by state or federal Endangered Species Acts. And in Haffman Bay, there are four of these. It's the San Francisco Garter Snake, California Red-legged Frog, the Western Snowy Plubber, and Steelhead. And then sensitive special status species also include species of special concern and then also rare plants that are listed by the California Native Plant Society. So our mapped Esches include, first of all, critical habitats that were defined by the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service and that were mapped in the federal register. And these include California Red-legged Frog, which are located on the eastern edge of the planning area. And I should note that these purple areas that denote the critical habitat for Red-legged Frog basically run off the map and that we're just catching the very western edge of the critical habitat area with these. So, and then also critical habitats that were mapped as ESHA were the Steelhead in some of the major creeks, Pillar Cetus Creek and Royal Yon, for instance. And then also Western Snowy Plubber habitat along Haffman Bay State Beach, where the Snowy Plutter's nest. Also mapped as ESHA were California Red-legged Frog breeding ponds and California Red-legged Frog and San Francisco Garter Snake upland foraging and dispersal habitats around breeding ponds and important dispersal corridors. So areas that were mapped as potential ESHA on this map included potential Red-legged Frog and Garter Snake upland foraging and dispersal habitats. The general boundaries of two rare plant species. The perennial goldfields in the coastal and the corset's popcorn flower, which were basically along the bluff, the open space bluff tops and wave crests in the area west of Railroad Avenue. Significant winter raptor foraging area in that same area of the coastal bluff and documented nesting areas for two species of concern, the Brian Savannah Sparrow and the Grasshopper Sparrow also, which are in those coastal bluff areas. So moving on to the summary map, we have, oh, okay. The areas that we mapped as ESHA are in blue and the areas that we mapped as potential ESHA are in pink. And there's a lot of detail that went into preparing these maps and a lot of, a lot of information that can be sought out with this. And so if you have questions, I'm happy to answer those. Our firm also contributed to some of the narrative on the cultural resources chapter and prepared some of the tables that are there. And we weighed in on some of the policy decisions that were being talked about. And I think that's where Ripley wants to take us now, is talking about some of the policy.
Thank you, Gary. Okay, so I'm going to take us through the natural resources chapter. As Jill mentioned, we'll be doing this presentation in two parts. So the chapter has three sections. The bulk is the biological resources section. We'll be doing that first and then breaking for questions and comments. And then we'll jump back in with the two shorter sections, natural shorelines and hydrology and water quality. So the chapter as a whole improves upon the existing land use plan with all of the updated bio-information and mapping that Gary just went over. We're no longer relying on the San Mateo County LCP's bio-information and we're considering sea level rise and its impacts on our natural resources. This chapter is one piece of the whole land use plan. It's highly interconnected with the other chapters. We will be going through that throughout our presentation, but just ask you to keep that in mind as we are going through this. The chapter is meant to be a tool for everyone in this room. The planners and decision-makers and public and biologists. And it is technical and it's long, but we intended it to be user-friendly and almost predictable. If it did not come across that way, please tell us. Because we're going to be using this for the next 20-plus years. And it'll be available online and at the counter when you come into City Hall. And we want everyone to be comfortable with it. So moving on to the first section of the chapter, biological resources. The chapter jumps in with narrative on the relevant coastal act policies and other legal regulatory framework from applicable agencies, both state and federal. Our goal here with the land use plan is to be consistent with the Coastal Act, but there are other applicable laws and regulations that we do need to keep in mind. And those regulations and policies of the Coastal Act are all summarized in this first section. And then we jump into background on everything that Gary just went over. So we are complementing the habitat maps with narrative in paragraph and table format on what's in the planning area, what has special status, what we consider to be ESHA and potential ESHA, and then methods for how to protect those areas. So this is complementing the map, so you can actually look at the map, see where something is, go to the chapter, see how it's described, what its general constraints are, and then move on to the policies to figure out how to protect that area. So the policies generally lay out the procedure for how to study, identify, and protect Esches in association with development proposals. This is where, again, you would use the habitat maps as a tool to identify what level of study needs to be done. But it is what's on the ground that matters and what needs to be studied in order to identify the applicable policies. So each ESHA type has a policy category. There's a parallel structure. Each policy category has a permitted use, a required buffer area, permitted uses in those buffer areas, and then general performance standards for any permitted use. So for example, the dune habitat, it's considered ESHA. It has a required 100-foot buffer because it is ESHA. There are only resource-dependent uses permitted in the sand dunes and the sand dune buffers because it's ESHA. So for example, a trail would be considered a resource-dependent use in this case if it was providing beach access across the bluff. So we would have performance standards for allowing such a trail, including having raised boardwalks to protect the habitat at the most and including educational signage to notify the public users that there is sensitive habitat in the area. So we have many different types of ESHA and many different buffer requirements for the different types. We did summarize this on a table, Table 6-4, I believe, in an attempt to make this a little more user-friendly. But it is complex. There are many different situations and different habitat types and different increased or decreased buffers. So we do ask for your input on the application and the terminology used. The intent, though, was to increase buffers where it is appropriate and to decrease them without compromising habitat areas or hazard avoidance where appropriate as well to allow reasonable use of property for existing developed areas and landowners. So once we have identified what resources are on site and what applicable buffers and permitted uses are allowed, there are additional policies to protect the sensitive habitat areas. So these are primarily through different siting and design measures to avoid impacts from development, especially from any required fuel modification that would require vegetation removal. There are encouragements for construction best management practices, seasonal grading restrictions, erosion control measures, just to name a few. Where there are unavoidable impacts, mitigation is required at specific ratios dependent on the impacted habitat type. So policies wrap up with other methods and strategies for conservation and restoration besides avoidance from development standards. These could include mitigation banking, allowing an expedited review process for any minor restoration projects, and open space acquisition as a method for habitat conservation and hazard avoidance, especially in the shoreline bluff area. A new land use designation is introduced here, open space for conservation. It's a conservation tool intended to protect areas that are already deep restricted or have open space easements. We do mention in the Radish sheet attached to the staff report that we would like to punch this out a little more directly in policy, but the concept is introduced here. And finally, there are policies on sea level rise adaptation. So requiring monitoring of any restoration projects and avoiding habitat impacts from sea level rise, allowing space for inland migration. And that is it. And I will pass it back to Commissioner Benjamin to wrap up this section.
So with Gary, with the help we just got, I am going to skip my usual role of being wish of the explainer and try to remind us why it is that this chapter is connected to the other chapters of the local coastal program tonight. First, we're going to talk about biology. I think we all realize that one of the reasons we moved here was because we think the area is beautiful. The riparian corridors, the wetlands have an appeal. And so it's no surprise that many of the features are thought of as visual resources and the biology informs our thinking about what we need to protect. It's clear, since biology is one of the two twin pillars of the Coastal Act, that we need to recognize the Coastal Act's effort to balance the protection of cultural resources and the facilitation of coastal access. So it should come as no surprise to those of us who think about this a lot that this would inform and be informed by the Coastal Access Chapter. And it may not be obvious, but it also has implications for our hazards chapter. The Endangered Species Act and a lot of environmental laws have been thought of as justified as canaries in the proverbial coal mine, that if we are providing habitat for animals that have highly sensitive demands and those animals suddenly are in trouble, maybe as a harbinger that we're going to be in trouble at some point. And while that's certainly a reasonable concern, there are others. When we, for example, protect a habitat or a biological resource by removing endangered, sorry, removing invasive exotic species, for example, the Cape I V, we also have the benefit of removing it, or eucalyptus. We are removing vegetation that is not naturally adapted to our lands here. Those species burn very hot and they pose a real threat. So you can see that there's a tie to our hazards document as well. When we protect a riparian corridor, we're also avoiding adverse water quality impacts. So that's one of the reasons that tonight we're on natural resources. So that's one of the reasons that tonight's on Natural Resources addresses both biology and, as you'll see in a few minutes, water quality and hydrology. It also informs where we want to do our work. So if we're trying to protect certain areas that have biological significance, you can see how it would inform the way our development chapter eventually gets built. And to the extent that lands that have been managed for decades, if not centuries, in a way that's healthy, provides for healthy agriculture, you can see a nexus with our agriculture chapter. So this is an attempt to try to communicate how it is that this chapter ties in and forms an integration with the other elements of the local coastal program and indeed the general plan. Thank you.
So Chair, that was our presentation. We are prepared as a group to answer Planning Commission clarifying questions. But also, this will be our public comment period tonight for this portion of the Natural Resources chapter. And then you'll have time for a discussion. Following that, as Brittany reviewed, we'll have a second, much briefer presentation on natural shorelines and hydrology and water quality. And there will be a second public comment period for that. So just want to make sure everybody knows they'll have a chance to speak to any portion of this draft chapter.
Thank you, thank you very much for the presentation. And to the audience, I have a number of green cards here. If you do wish to speak, please fill out a card and provide it over to me. With that, are there any clarifying questions from the commissions?
A couple of questions of the staff. And just generally, in this binder that we have now, I'm assuming you're working on it, I just make sure that my community kind of wade my way through it. Is, so eventually you're going to have a table of contents for each of these chapters? Don't need to answer right this minute. And then also, is there going to be an appendix or some chapter that has definitions for us? Because I don't have my phone out every time I'm trying to read through something. You gave us a sheet for, well, let me first ask, and I've talked with Jill about this a little bit. I think we have, it's a question in my mind that we, several years ago, started working on revising our heritage tree ordinance. And I'm still trying to figure out where that fits here. And it's specifically more the definitions of heritage trees and, you know, which sections is going to fit into. Specifically, like, we know that if you're protecting a red-legged frog, we know what a red-legged frog is. If we're protecting a heritage tree, we don't necessarily know very well what it is, what the maintenance is. And so I'm wondering, from a policy point of view, we're not yet, it's not real clear yet here. And then the third question I have is that in the errata sheet you gave us, you've had some bullet points to be talking about buffer zones. And I'm not sure how to phrase this, but my question is that we have, from a policy point of view, we have these sort of generic buffers, 100 feet, 20 feet, mid-lines of streams, edges of banks. And I'm wondering if there's a language that we could be also adding from a policy point of view that, it may be that we have a buffer zone of 20 feet, but there's times when that's not practical just because of the topography and geology. And is there a language where we deal with that, where that buffer zone really ought to change? Or have flexibility? And I don't have an answer for that, but I think to have, to say something's 20 feet and we're talking about 700, 800 feet of a particular waterway that changes in the structure. So those are just my questions.
Yes, there will be tables of contents for every chapter. We will have a glossary and there'll be several other, we hope you find helpful appendices as we keep moving along. We intend to address heritage trees and really kind of the urban aspect of trees, street trees, park trees, private property trees, in the development chapter. And your question about the buffers, I think we can answer that, but I think we should go ahead and wait and catch that within the public comment, any discussion you have.
Do you have any question?
No, thank you. I'll just comment. I'd just say, you know, I'm sure we made mistakes. It's a big document, so we appreciate your forbearance and pointing them out and giving us a chance to make it right.
Okay, so with that, we will open up the public comment period. First card I have in front of me is Dana Riggs. And the second card would be Mike Rigs.
Just for you guys to go in public comment, I've got the microphone up here. I've got the timer back here, so I'll let you know whenever your three minutes is up.
Thank you, everyone. I love going first. I also have a cold, so I apologize if I don't sound clear. I am a biologist. I've worked here in the Heflin Bay area for the last 18 years on properties. Do I have three minutes?
Yeah.
Okay. All ready?
That means no one is here.
And I just have some concerns about, and I haven't had the time to digest the entire document, so if I state something incorrectly, please let me know. But I have some concerns about some of the designations, particularly with regards to the man-made impoundments as well as the dispersal habitats, particularly in regards to those properties where there is active farming or active ranching. And these areas have now been designated as ESHAs where they weren't before. I know that a lot of my clients, and I'm here representing several clients, farmers and ranchers here in the Heflin Bay that are greatly concerned about these designations. I understand that the man-made impoundments, it's in this policy that for actively, active man-made impoundments are not, the buffer zones do not apply. And that the management of those ponds can continue, but I don't understand why we are designating them as ESHA then. Because if we know that the pond is even in use and is actively being operated for that facility, why is it being designated? Because it adds a layer of regulation that I don't think that these landowners necessarily need. And then also, I want to address the dispersal habitat. This is an area that I've studied, particularly with the red-legged frog, for many, many, many years here in Heflin Bay. I understand, I worked with Mark Jennings, and I know that there is really a lot of potential for frogs to be almost anywhere in the city because of the way that they move overland. So I definitely value conserving wildlife corridors that we need to preserve so there's no disruption of those movement patterns. However, some of the designations that have been made for dispersal are unclear to me. In particular, I don't know, it's, there's a concern with, like, the Branscombe Farms, that property, we've done extensive biological monitoring out there. There really is no refugia for the frog to utilize to cross that area. And there's ample dispersal habitat immediately north of that property. So it's unclear why the city chose to, or why the biologists chose to designate that area when there's ample existing area next to it. And so I just want to quickly, I don't know, I'm really up. Just say that those dispersal habitats are used very sporadically. And only a small proportion of the year are they dispersal habitats. So to consider it occupied is sort of a misnomer because it's only occupied for a few days out of the year. So I'd like you to take that into consideration when you are designating particularly active farms and ranches. Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners and consultants. Just to follow up on what I've just heard, one of the things that occurred to me is that we could clarify the business of mapping impoundments by having a different color for an active impoundment and an abandoned impoundment, because there's a world of difference between the abandoned impoundments have buffer zones. The active impoundments do not.
Could you, could you please speak in the line?
Active impoundments have buffered, but do not have buffer zones. Abandoned ones do have buffer zones. And so I think they should be colored differently on your resource map because it's a major difference. I have other things. At 617, it starts out with where a reduced buffer zone is proposed. The language there seems almost to invite reduced buffer zones. And I'd really rather think that this is something that we should be rather firm about. A buffer zone is a buffer zone, the amount of feet is that. And it's only in a rare circumstance that we would ever change that and probably only with the coastal commission's authorization. Then 620, talk about trails in ESHA. I am not certain that the public access ways should be there. Trail seems quite adequate. And the phrase "public access way" seems expansive. Something other than a trail, obviously. In 621, well, I think I'll just drop that one because it's very complicated for the amount of minutes I have. On 622, again, we're coming to the smaller buffers being allowed. And then, under a condition B, the proposed narrower buffer would be amply protected with the biological resource type and intensity of disturbance as confirmed by a qualified biologist. Well, not all biologists are of the caliber of Mr. Deggie. And they have to make a living. And I think you're kind of opening the door here a bit for interpretation of this we don't need. And is that my three minutes? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. And just to, just to clarify, you're accepting comments on this throughout. So plenty of times, plenty of opportunities to provide more detailed comments as we go through. So with that, Casey Brantford.
Really quickly, one more announcement for public comment. I really need to make sure that you guys are speaking directly into the microphone. Keep in mind that Commissioner Chair Holt is, I'm sorry, Chair Hernandez has actually dialed in and he's through our speaker phone system. So he's having a tough time hearing everybody, so it's got to be loud and...
I'm a Colorado girl, I can be loud. Okay, I only have three minutes, so I'm going to be really quick. I'm here because I care about town in Heflin Bay. I've been here for 14 years. I try to just mind my business. I own 74 acres, five parcels, six residential units. And I run Branscombe Farm, which is a clinical breeding laboratory for UC Davis. And we do, we're basically the regional support for equine breeding in the area. We do foaling stallions, we do freezing stallions. We raise, take retired root mares, we raise and train young horses. And a lot of people in Sea Haven, I think we have like a hundred-some-odd neighbors that are 60 of which I think we share a fence line with. You know, they like to look over the fields and see those pretty green grasses and the horses, you know, running free in the fields and all that. And I'm just here to say, with all the stuff y'all got in the plan about wanting to support rural land uses and encourage family farms and people that are building businesses that are making open use of the fields and producing, I don't think you have a friggin' clue what it takes to actually run one of those businesses, what we need in terms of the ability to just make out a meager profit, cover our friggin' property taxes, and feed our employees. And I would really open a suggestion that we try and find common ground. Because I get it, I represent the urban reserve zone, you know, I'm in urban reserve. Urban reserve was a bad idea at the time, it's a bad idea today. But you can't deny what's in Table 9-1, what it says in Chapter 9 about what it was supposed to be and the promises that were made to all these family farmers that have these bigger parcels. So somehow, we got to get through all this stuff and begin to sit down and come up with something that works. Because none of us want to build another Sea Haven. I have no desire to see that. But I also, you know, what did I do today? This morning before I came here, I was out cleaning a ditch. Because if I don't clean the friggin' ditch with a shovel and leave my guys to make sure everybody works hard to get it done in time, then, you know, the road washes out, we can't get over there to feed the animals. So then, all of a sudden, we've got horses that aren't getting fed or we can't get to in an emergency and we've got a problem. So the point is, you've got to understand the reality of what it takes. And what I would like to encourage you to recognize is, you aren't the only show in town. The fire, like, I have my property, which, by the way, I love this ground truth thing. Did you ever ground truth Branscombe Farms? Because you'd find a 60-year-old Class II base rock, but a 110-by-65-foot arena, a three-bedroom house, and a whole bunch of, you know, cultivated fields that have been used for pasture or for horticulture for almost 100 years. And they're all ESHA. So explain that to me. I don't believe they're ESHA. I don't think anybody's seen a frog up there. Okay, so ground truthing, let's ground truth. But, you know, I'd like to be able to have some appeals process where I can bring in a certified biological study and let's find out if there are any frogs in that pond. And don't forget fire. Because fire department requires us to clear all those wonderful bushes and trees and plants and such in order to protect Sea Haven. And that man-made impoundment that you care so much about, that's the water safety for what Cal Fire expects to be able to use if we do have those big eucalyptus that surround our property, burn so hot, as we say. So you got to make us be able to have a living, you know, we have to survive. And it takes digging in and really understanding how our business is run, the economics of what they require, to just stay in business. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Chris Rogers.
Thanks for all your work. I can appreciate, as a biologist, also, the effort it took to compile and synthesize all that information from the pre-digital era and generating maps like this. And they're generally really, really good and are going to be a really helpful tool. So what I'm offering here, a couple of comments just to help maybe fine-tune a couple of things. One of them is the designation on the habitat map of golf courses of agriculture. I'm not clear why that seems to appear as agriculture. Maybe it was meant to be landscape, but maybe it's just a color thing. Also, the coastal terrace prairie, which is an important ESHA resource, is shown on Figure 6-2, but doesn't show up as a habitat type on Figure 6-1. And I think in the text itself, the report, there's no habitat description for that type. You're shaking, you're nodding your head like you already know that. Great, okay. And then a couple of comments on some of the policies. On 615, it recommends that qualified biologists submit, it encourages them to submit CNDD reports for special status species. I think of that as generally, you know, a professional obligation for biologists. So I would recommend that language be changed. On Policy 618 regarding sea level rise, I don't think that a biologist doing a biological evaluation is the best qualified person to make a sea level rise vulnerability assessment. And probably it should be designated to, that task to a geomorphologist or a coastal engineer of the type that the city is inhabited of hiring for those kinds of things. And then on 78, I see a bit of a conflict there because it prohibits the use of invasive species in ESHA buffers. But elsewhere, I think it's in like 639, it says that you can do agriculture and grazing in ESHA buffers if it's appropriate. So some agriculture are invasive, use invasive species. I think we just need to refine the policy to maybe reference Cal invasive Species Council risk designations for types of invasive species that should be prohibited. And that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Carrie Burke.
Good evening, my name's Carrie Burke. And first, I'd like to convey a message from Jess Brown, the executive director for Farm Bureau from San Mateo County. Bureau for San Mateo County. Jess couldn't be here tonight, but he really would like to meet with planning staff on the natural resources and agricultural policies because they are critical for some of our larger landholders and our land managers in the agricultural community. So I know that can be arranged, and I'll work with Jill on that. This is a very impressive and important chapter of our new LCP. It is a building block, as Commissioner Benjamin mentioned, for our LCP and our general plan. I believe that, well, it is hard for the general public to digest. They might not be familiar with these technical words and the format. And that, hopefully, that this, these policies, these draft policies would still be available to be commented on because I think the general plan, the general public will relate more to the land use policies, and then they can see how they relate. So as long as these can be melded and be opened in the future, that would be a great benefit to the laypeople that I've spoken with. Also, on the maps, they are, the colors that are a little hard to read, and even when I've had them printed up myself, and so I would hope that GIS format that could be accessed per parcel number and to make sure that color gradient was distinct enough so you can really tell, you know, what you're looking at, what category you're looking at for a specific parcel would be extremely helpful. I do have a little bit of concern for the city and for private individuals by having the Esha maps as, in the LCP, that they would require amendments. It could be very costly and timely for the city and for individuals going forward if amendments are required because we don't know the level of detail that might be needed in order to make a change to the maps. So I think some, we really need to think long and hard about what the consequences of having some thing so nailed down the plan that could be very difficult to change. Doesn't mean that because you have Esha, you couldn't do something that was appropriate, but, you know, I, I think we really need to think about that long term. Also, I didn't understand why in the Pullman ditch that in recent actions, a twenty-foot setback has been utilized, that it's mentioned as thirty-five in the plan, so that would be important to understand that distinction. Also, on the Lot Retirement Program, was mentioned in this area, and again, the implications of having a program spelled out so we could understand the ramifications of permanently designating something on the Lot Retirement Program would be really important. I will submit some more detailed written comments, but I appreciate your attention. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, Bruce Russell.
Is that working? A comment about colors, let me clarify that the golf course is designated as landscape and non-native grasses, the colors are hard to read, it's not agricultural. I think the staff and the consultants have done a really, really skirt job here. I think it's a really difficult process and certainly come a long way from the ninety-three LCP and the maps that were attached. My comments really have to do with clarifying some issues that I think the staff needs to look at and questions about not carrying forward some of the existing policies and changing them pretty significantly for what people are used to. For example, your current coastal resource ordinance in your LCP exempts any pre-approved development that has not been amended for one year. In six point two-four, that exemption has only been carried over for Esha, not for riparian corridors, not for non-reparian water courses, and not for wetlands. And I think that's a really big departure, particularly for existing uses that were approved by the Coastal Commission or by the city. My other comments really have to do with clarifying, I think it's really important that there be clarity in terms of existing development and uses and restrictions, like, for example, buffers. You have certain buffers provisions for Esha, and you have different buffers for riparian corridors and for wetlands, but both of those are Esha. So is it a hundred-foot buffer or is it a hundred from the top of bank, fifty from riparian vegetation? I mean, both riparian corridors and wetlands are included in definition of Esha. Your existing ordinances address species Esha and dealt with riparian corridors and wetlands separately, and that's why the buffer distinctions were made. I think you need to clarify that. I think that you have increased buffers in significant areas. For example, intermittent streams, the existing rule, the rule that's been in this city for a long time is, without vegetation, an intermittent stream is thirty feet from the midstream. Current rule is thirty-five from the top of the bank. I'm not saying that that's inappropriate, but you could have existing dwellings that would now become non-conforming and would be in that buffer zone. And I think you need to address grandparenting some of those uses in and dealing with the transition from one buffer zone to a different buffer zone. The twenty-foot provisions and stuff, that will deal with this problem. The other thing is that several of your buffer zones, and particularly the wetlands buffer zone or the habitat buffer zone, deal with a minimum of a hundred feet. The U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, the Department of Fish and Game often imposed buffer zones much more significant than a hundred feet, and I understand why it says a minimum of a hundred feet. But in many of your other buffer zones, you have language about a minimum of blank or at least blank. I think that leads to confusion as to what the buffer zones are in those areas, like, for example, riparian corridors or non-reparian water courses. I think that, so that there's clarity for people, I think it would be better in the non-species buffer zone areas for you to designate those specific provisions. So I think it's really a matter of clarifying some of these inconsistencies or issues in terms of the buffers because they're really important. And I think it's important for the city to have clarity and for landowners to have clarity as to what their property is to be subject to. Thank you.
Thank you. And the last card I have here is Terry Andriati. Again, anybody wishes to speak, please feel free to fill out a free card.
Hi there, I'm Terry Andriati, former Kelly Avenue, been in the city for ninety-two years. And I'm here just to say, my concerns are, I'm here for the frogs, the snakes. When I put my driving range in in two thousand, I knew one day the city would take down all the power lines on Kelly Avenue. I surrounded my ponds, my fields, my acreage with trees so the birds could, you know, have their babies, the frogs can have a place to go. And that's why right now, our farm is almost all natural. When it rains, we get tons of worms, but I, we need every bit of soil that we can use. I know you have your habitats, you have to keep certain places, I mean, certain spots where you have to keep certain, like, fifty feet away from certain places, but we need every bit of soil that we can, you know, to, to use to survive. I think what we've done there, where we are, I might, a habitat for all the, you know, what's left of the city. We don't need trails. We need to get, we need to work with the farmers to keep doing what we love to do, but we don't need more restrictions. You just need to work more with us to keep the habitat coming because with, I mean, this year, when we dished the fields and plowed, we hardly, we hardly had any rodent problems and gopher problems. We have tons of different types of owls now. The frogs, you know, frogs eat the bugs, the bugs, the air harrians eat the frogs. But again, I'm glad that I got to talk to the city planner yesterday, and she's gonna keep me informed, she's gonna try to work with the farmers, but again, like I said before, we need every inch of ground to keep, to survive in this town. It's hard enough with all the taxes that we have to, you know, spend to survive. And I hope that you can work with Casey Kelly, just because she's a horse person and it's not food, but she does bring a lot to the city by selling her horses and making a lot of tax, I mean, it's open space. She's got a lot of plans in the, you know, works to teach kids about farm life plus the horse life production. And myself, I work with the 4-H, the FFA, the Boy Scouts, the Girl Scouts, I teach cooking seminars, you know, and talk about seeds and plants. So in a way, I'm glad this is happening, but you need to work with us. It's kind of scary to come in here and just listen to what you wanna maybe control more, you know, for the frogs and stuff, but what you really need to do is work with us too. And I'm glad I got to get up and talk. And I'm not a talker, only when I drink coffee, and I didn't have any today. So, anyway, thanks again for letting me speak, and I hope that we can, you know, get together and work all together. Thanks.
Thank you. So that was the last speaker card I have. See, nobody else jumping up to speak. We are going to impose a public comment there and bring it back to the planning committee
Yeah, I read through this, as obviously did some of the people in the audience, and there's a lot to the entire desk here, and just want to ensure people that this is on the final draft, and we're always looking for comments, and hopefully we'll have some advice from the Jill and others, whatever the process is, what it means, and what happens next. And so, but I think the issues that were raised and I wrote down for them, grandfather issues are important, that areas that have been agriculture for a hundred years, areas that own, that are now in Esha boundaries and so on. So I think it's very important that the grandfather issues be very clear in here. Is that better? And other one I kind of read over and hopefully we can have some comment on later, six twenty-four, which kind of hits some of the questions, pre-existing development in Esha. Hopefully, this section can be beefed up and be clear so that everybody understands, you know, what is grandfather perhaps and what is not. So those are my initial comments. Thank you.
Les covered my questions in articulated very well. Thank you.
So I had some comments, but before I do, I want to give, because I, I just say thanks for the input because it's really helpful to get perspective. I just want to give Jill a chance to address some of the questions before I bring my own, my own additional thoughts in to respond. So let me bear with me for a bit.
Staff's getting organized to respond to a few of these comments. We think it would be helpful to folks when you go back and study the documents a bit more. There's a lot of layers in it, and I'm going to note a few things and then rely on Gary and Brittany to get a little more technical, but we want to be real, real clear, there's no comment period set yet. The development chapter's coming out in December nineteenth, and that's in the evening when we're going to talk about some of the other chapters as well. We'll be reviewing that chapter in January, and probably by then, we'll start talking about what kind of timelines we need for the comment period. So you have plenty of time to be looking through this. What I heard, and I'd like my friends over here to talk about is agricultural operations in the riparian buffer area, ag ponds, the uplands of Branscombe Farms and how that was mapped and why, comments about a specific buffer on the Pullman ditch, the overall approach to acknowledging existing uses, existing permitted uses, and what our intention was, which I think is, our intention was in line with a lot of the comments we heard tonight. So we have some work to do on that, it sounds like. And I'll see what else I've got through my notes.
So, if you're gonna let me take the lead here, there's a number of notes that I made that relate specifically to the maps, and probably the most significant comes from the, both the biologists and the landowner of Branscombe Farms, and which shows on the Esha maps that it's mapped as an Esha. And specifically because it's in the critical habitat area for the California red-legged frog. Did we ground truth that area? We did. And if you look at the habitat map for your area, we show that the habitat there is being developed. So we have a map that is like frog habitat or anything like that. The critical habitats were mapped based on information that's published in the Federal Register. The critical habitats are designated by the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service as part of their recovery plan and, you know, designation for how to protect the species. It's mapped in the Federal Register. I can't change that. It's, it's, it's in the Federal Register, it's a legally required designation that the federal government makes regarding where they are looking to, to, to help gain recovery for the species. All critical habitat designations allow, they cover broad areas. I told you, the, the critical habitat designation for the California red-legged frog goes way off the map. It includes all the watersheds above where you are, and you're just catching the very last tidbit of that as it crosses into our, into our, into our planning area. But all critical habitat designations allow for, for some play there. And the fact that we've mapped it as a developed area, I think helps gives you some protection there. That certainly, if you wanted to do anything in that property as a change in land use or anything like that, you'd have your biologists, they would look at our, at our habitat map, they'd recognize that it's in the critical habitat, and I'm sure they could come up with the findings necessary to not constrain you from, from doing what you need to do on that, on that, that piece of land. So I, I, that's the best that I can offer at this point in response to that. There was, the idea that, that the coastal terrace prairie was not on the habitat map, that's an oversight. It should be. And, and as we go back and redo the maps for the final, that'll be in there. The coastal terrace prairie is discussed as a habitat type in the front of the document, and, and there's discussion about what, what species occur in the, in the coastal terrace prairie, and there's specific policy related to the coastal terrace prairie as an Esha habitat. It needs to go on the habitat map, and so we'll put there. The comment that biologists have a professional obligation to alert the California National Diversity Database is database of any significant special status species find is true, and, we can take under advisement changing the, the language in the specific spot that you mentioned to accommodate that. There was a comment that the colors were hard to read. You should, you should know that we went through a bit of labor trying to, we recognize that, and, and we went through a bit of labor. First of all, we did this on two maps because we were running out of colors, and so we tried to make as, as many different, you know, distinguishable colors as, as we could. One of the things that's leading to a little bit of confusion in the colors is the fact that we're trying to do this on aerial photographs. We tried doing this on black and white, it wasn't as effective. We tried doing it on USGS topo maps, and it was completely ineffective. I, we really think you want to see the underlying aerial, and so we tried to lighten the aerial, and we've done the best we can here to meet kind of a common ground. There was another comment that landscaping versus, versus agricultural are very similar, and Bruce Russell made a comment that the golf course is in fact not labeled as agriculture, it was intended to be labeled as, as, as landscaping. It was intended to be labeled as landscaping. The other thing on the map was from Terry Andriati, who was saying, "We need our farm in order to make a living, and we haven't mapped anything in the way of environmentally sensitive habitat areas there." So was there another comment on the map that you thought that I should respond to? And I was thinking the rest of it, maybe you could do. There was a comment about man-made impoundments and why they're labeled as an ESHA. They're labeled as potential ESHA, recognizing that in their current condition, they're not treated as ESHA, and the buffer zones don't apply, policies don't apply to that. I'm sure maybe Jill can respond a little more. But it's potential ESHA, because if it's abandoned, then it could be an environmentally sensitive habitat. So the potential is there, and that's why we label it as potential ESHA, but it needs to be further studied. Mike's comment about using a different color for active versus abandoned. Are there any abandoned ponds?
Yes.
Oh, there are. There are. I can think of some. So I'll let you, let me let you handle that. Yeah.
I'll build on that a little bit. So we have an obligation to map what is ESHA and potential ESHA. That is why we've included ponds and impoundments in that potential ESHA category. They do have the potential to support sensitive species such as the red-legged frog. We've seen that in multiple cases. And that's an obligation we have under the Coastal Act. What we can do is address that through policy, and that's what we have attempted to do here in consideration of the farmers and the landowners who built those ponds to support their land uses for irrigation and other purposes. So we have tried to make those allowances to not apply buffers, even though we have to map these potential ESHAs as potential ESHAs. Mike's comment on public access ways, we can discuss it, but yes, we could get a little more specific there. Beach access ways are resource-dependent on beaches and dunes. Nature trails are dependent on nature. We could be a little more specific there. Chris's comment on the invasive species, policy six seventy-eight. Thank you for pointing that out. We have over a hundred policies, and just in this section, there is some confusion with hierarchy, and we, of course, try to eliminate conflicts, and we'll make clarifications where that isn't clear. As in this case, agriculture is a permitted use in riparian buffers. And that would control there, so we can clarify that the invasive species policy is more related to landscaping and other types of planting. Okay, so anything these policies apply to are going to be looked at in association with a development proposal. So we're not going out and looking for non-conforming uses, where ag is permitted next to buffers where it currently is, and as permitted, as a permitted use in the policies in this plan. Same with ponds. We have the policies addressing active versus abandoned. If it was abandoned and became ESHA, we would only look at that if there was a development proposal to change that land use and required additional study to see what's on the ground. So we're going to move on to the buffers. And Jill, do you want to add? Okay. Pullman Ditch is specifically addressed in policy six dash forty-two. It is an intermittent stream. It is a case where there is no riparian vegetation, so a lesser buffer is considered. And where there are existing building sites, a further reduced buffer is allowed to give those landowners a reasonable use of their property. This doesn't compromise sensitive habitat. It still allows hazard protection from the drainage erosion. And that's, in that policy, it calls out the Pullman Water Course. And it is consistent with what we have now and what our practice has been.
Thank you. We're going to wrap up on some of these responses. And I'm really happy to hear that folks want to meet with us. We've been trying to meet with folks, and we have had some excellent time learning more about your properties and your concerns. And we encourage you to reach out to us. We've tried to invite people in as well. So definitely, don't be shy about that. Our Planning Commission Chair has sent over a few comments, and I'm going to go ahead and read those in. So Chair Hernandez is saying that he wants to make sure that we capture the concerns that were raised today and that we respond to them appropriately. He is asking city staff to create a punch list from today's session and make sure we have responses in writing or verbally during a commission meeting. And obviously, that's what we're trying to do now, and we will keep doing that. And I think we'll get it back to the commission.
So Chair, now I'd like to offer my own response. Thanks again to the public. In reading the draft, I should say that since I had a hand in reading it, part of my job now is to step away from it and look at it like my colleagues on the Planning Commission rather than as an adjunct to staff to try to facilitate this. So I can straddle both, and I hope you'll bear with me. I appreciated Commissioner Evans' comment about the heritage trees. Oh, a little bit, beg your pardon. Thank you. So I appreciate Commissioner Evans' comment with respect to the heritage trees. And in addition to the area where Jill had mentioned it, I think of heritage trees as being something of a visual resource. So it may well also be that there'll be a chance to address it there. I think that's a fair question. I appreciated the comments that Steph just made about the Pullman Water Course. We're using the word water course now rather than ditches. You'll see that in this document. And the reason we do that is because ditch has a kind of pejorative quality to it, and a water course is definitively something that's natural or man-made. It can be perennial or intermittent or ephemeral. And it doesn't suggest that it's not entitled to protection, because these things get protection, whether we think of them as ditches or not. If they have resources, they have certain degrees of protection. The text that talks about, that talked about Pullman and the buffers need to be seen in the context of the hazards chapter, which we haven't gotten to yet. But like all of our channelized water courses, there is a challenge at Pullman with respect to several types of erosion. One of them is the possibility of the stream meandering. And the closer you are to that meander, you know, if it's meandering away from you, you're good. If it's meandering toward you, maybe not as good. There's also a challenge on that particular water course of upcutting. And I'm sure we'll have a chance to address that more when we talk about the hazards chapter. But it's an interesting case, and like Seymour and some of the other drainages in our community, I think they represent an interesting nexus between our responsibility to protect biology and to protect public safety. It turns out that when we do one, we often do the other. So I hope that we'll get a virtuous cycle out of working those. That said, I noticed that we have a policy that says where we have little drainages, maybe that was the one place in the document where we called them ditches, where we have, there's some, there was a section of policy, I can actually tell you where it was, where we said there would be no buffers on those drainage ditches. And then there was a reference on the same page with Pullman having a drainage. So we probably need to clarify. I imagine what we're talking about there are, say, the grassy swales on the sides of roads and, you know, things like that. So no question about what's intended, but someone who was reading it who didn't have all of that background might be troubled by it. There's also, throughout this document, we refer to one of the drainages in town as the Naples Water Course or Naples Creek. And I should just point out that in the Army Corps of Engineers map and the War Department map that was built in nineteen forty-one before that, that was referred to as Roosevelt Creek. It's actually the same drainage, and, you know, we probably need to have language to clarify that for folks who have been around and think of it as Roosevelt, so that there's no question about to what we are referring. It actually was a blue line stream, is a blue line stream, I think, in some areas. There is, oh, the table with the reference to Pullman, I think it's on, it was on page six dash sixty-seven. In the document, there are references to LID, low-impact development, and I think we're going to talk about BMP's best management practices. And I have a feeling that those are also terms of our, that we're probably going to have to explain better so people know what they're expecting. And finally, I'd just like to reassure, I heard a couple of comments from the public that suggested that they were worried that we, as a result of these changes, there was going to be some limitation on the, you know, somehow the existing development would be made unlawful. And I just want to emphasize that we're not and could not propose ex post facto law here. You know, we're trying to make good decisions for planning, and better planning than we had in the past means changes from what it was in the past. But that doesn't mean someone's going to come along and say, hey, your house is in the buffer. Can't be there anymore, or some crazy thing like that. That's not where we are at all. And I, once again, I really appreciate the public comments. I am interested in hearing, part of my job as a planning commissioner, now that my work on the draft is done, is to have an open mind and hear your thoughts. So keep up coming.
I'm not sure who to, how to do that. Kind of like a referee of a tennis match here and talk to you folks. I have, for those people that talked about having a hard time seeing the maps and understanding the colors, I'm with you all the way on that. It's really hard to distinguish, and we call colors blue or whatever. So I'm assuming that, and if you're not, you're using some like Pantone numbering system so that when the colors are duplicated, the printers can do it accurately. Red, green, blue, those all have numbering systems. So if I'm looking at a map here, maybe we could, this is a suggestion, that when you have the colors printed as colors, you could also put the Pantone number there so that you could actually just see, and then you could differentiate, you know, by the numbering system, different colors. This is kind of a key suggestion to the graphics.
Great. Thanks. Well, one, I want to thank staff and the subcommittee for what is a lot of great work in this draft, and definitely look forward to diving in deeper on all of it. And appreciate all the comments from the public. I'm a firm believer that agriculture, habitat, and people can coexist and can actually work together to improve places. And we talk a lot about impacts, but I think there's a lot of opportunities to actually improve habitat in a way that is consistent with and allows some of the existing uses to go. I think this plan provides some policies that lets us get there as we're looking at future development that can actually invest in improving habitat and not just maintaining what we have. And I think that's a really powerful thing. Regarding the maps, I did hear the suggestion about developing some sort of a GIS system, a parcel system. I know that that can be difficult or costly, but one potential workaround that staff might want to consider is you can take this GIS data and just create a KML or a KMZ that can be brought into Google Earth, and something that could then be made available to the public so you can actually zoom in and sort of turn on different layers at different times. Something that could be embedded either on the city's website or just made available to people as they need it. So that might be helpful in terms of looking at static maps as well. So with that, yeah, I appreciate all the comments that have been here, and I've got nothing, no further comments, so we can move on to the next presentation.
All right. We are going to make a little shift. We're going to bring our city engineer over, and Brittany's going to kick off the second section, and Maziar will cover the third.
Okay, so jumping into the second part of our presentation, the second section of the Natural Resources Chapter. And the natural shoreline section is short but sweet. We did decide to pull it out to be on its own because the shorelines are a dynamic system that function as a whole, although they do contain several components of what we just went over as ESHA. So we have six miles of shoreline, including the beaches, bluffs, and dunes, and luckily, a relatively limited amount of urban shoreline development. But we are seeing the impacts on our shorelines from sea level rise, the Miramar Ranger House being a perfect example. Bluff erosion is natural, but it will exacerbate as sea levels rise and wave action increases. This creates a phenomenon called coastal squeeze, where the sea levels rise, inundate the beach area, erode the bluff back to where it meets the shoreline development and essentially wipes out the sandy shoreline area. So this is a major concern for many coastal cities, and particularly us. We have a lot of bluff area where this can occur. So most of the policies addressing those hazards and those erosion concerns are in our coastal hazards section. This section here on natural shorelines focuses more on the natural resource of shorelines. So policies are generally about protecting and managing the shorelines as a natural resource for Hafnum Bay. Specifically, the primary policy calls for establishing a shoreline management plan where we would look at segments of our coastline and assess it for its need for beach nourishment, shoreline protection, and other sea level rise adaptation strategies. And that is it. It is short. And now our city engineer will go over the third and final section, hydrology and water quality.
Thank you, Brittany. First, I wanted to start off by thanking the invite to come and speak at this forum, both the commission and the general public here. For folks that don't know me, I'm Maziar Zergunia, city engineer. I've been with the city since January, and I'll be talking about hydrology, water quality. What you see here before you is actually our water basin map. This shows all, sorry, the hydrologic map for the city within the planning area. Just wanted to point out that this is a draft. There are some areas that we found some errors in, which we'll be updating. There are some areas that we found some concerns, some errors in, which we'll be updating. So just wanted to provide that background before we move, before you guys look too deeply into it. So tonight, I just wanted to talk a little bit about the hydrology and water quality, and I'll try to keep it brief as well. A few terms that I want folks to keep in mind, watersheds and basins, those are somewhat interchangeable. Watersheds are more on the micro scale and basins are more towards the macro scale when we're talking about water quality, water and hydrology. Water course, as Commissioner Benjamin mentioned earlier, is a term that we're going to be utilizing, and I'll be honest, it's been tough for me to stay away from the D word and go with water course, and I'm trying my best. Hydro modification is another term that'll come up, and that's essentially the alteration of natural flow of water through different means. And NPDS, which stands for the National Pollution Discharge and Elimination System, that is the permitting by the state that municipalities are required to enter into, that oversees the surface runoff and water quality compliance for jurisdictions. The city's planning area is, as far as the hydrology and water quality, the city's planning area is entirely within the Cal Water Maps area of the San Mateo coastal hydrologic area. This is divided into smaller basins and sub-basins and what are called hydrologic sub-areas. These four planning watersheds are Denniston Creek, Pilar Cito's Creek, Mills Creek, and Parisima Creek. These resources, the resources that have been utilized to put together this portion and subsequent portions that we'll be talking about come from past studies, County Sea Level Rise Vulnerability Study and studies not just within this local community, but also from the state and regional water board. Surface water resources, we have a number of creeks and streams. This majority of them are seasonal, especially in the lesser drainages, and offer a variety of benefits, drinking and irrigation and supply for agricultural uses, aquatic wildlife resources, recreational opportunities, to name a few. There are also major creeks and drainages, which are, which are the Frenchman's Creek, Pilar Cito's Creek, Arroyo Leon Creek, Hapanolio Creek, and Arroyo Canyata Verde. These flows are primarily driven by precipitation for surface run, surface waters. The minor creeks and drainages that we have, they are, there are several minor and natural and man-made ones, to name a few, Pullman, Wave Crest, and Seymour Water Courses. And these all contribute towards habitat, groundwater recharge, stormwater flood management, sediment transport. With regards to groundwater, this is one very important element of hydrology. Again, this also impacts the supply of drinking water and irrigation, and it also can influence surface water through inflow and discharges. The plan area almost entirely is underlaid by the Half Moon Bay Terrace groundwater basin. The basin in total is about a little less than 10,000 acres, 3,500 acres of it which is within the plan area. And then these underground storm, these underground groundwater basins are then divided into smaller sub-basins, which are referenced as El Granada, Arroyo de, Arroyo de En Medio, Frenchman's Creek, and lower Pilar Cito's Creek sub-basins. One thing to note is that the narrative may change with upcoming changes to, with reference to the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act. This act was passed in 2014 by the State of California, and essentially it establishes a classification of storm, of groundwater basins. And cities, this groundwater basin is a, is in the low impact, and recently the state submitted a letter to the city of Half Moon Bay, the county, and other stakeholders that they're looking into possibility of raising the awareness to a medium to high priority, which would require quite a bit of changes to our governing body and some, and definitely changes to the narrative. So we, for now, it's, that piece has been on hold, but it's a possibility that they can do a, they can revisit this annually, and so it may come up again. Talking about water quality, water quality really is a balance between the surface and groundwater flows. The surface water quality is influenced by runoff and materials transported therein. The groundwater is influenced by well, by a variety of different issues, but specifically by wells' location and depth. And they do have a balance to, with regards to groundwater recharge, surface waters can be utilized to recharge the groundwater system, and so they do play a very delicate balance between the two. And then we have, wanted to briefly touch on hydro modification, which is defined as a development-induced changes to natural hydrologic and runoff characteristics. This is important as we talk about the hydrology and water quality with regards to development in this plan. Generally, the watersheds in the plan area are find low percentages of imperviousness, which compared, which when compared to the region is a good thing, although development does contribute to stream channel incising, which is considered lowering or widening of stream banks. With this, the flows are impacted, especially higher flows, with regards to sediment transport, degrading our water courses. And a lot of times when we folks talk, when we talk about hydrology and water quality, folks tend to think about flooding and droughts and things of that nature, but one important aspect and element that isn't as widely discussed is sediment transport, which is a naturally occurring phenomenon, but it is exacerbated by development in poor regulations. Now I want to just briefly talk a little bit about restoration. There, the one great thing is we have plenty of opportunities for restoration, such as the Seymour Water Course project. There, you folks have probably seen the interim project that was done about a year or two ago. The city's working on a larger restoration project, which is also required as part of the regulatory agency agreements on the project permitting. We are also looking through other means, such as green infrastructure and groundwater recharge. The intersection of Parisima and Correia's right outside is a great example of that. That was a project that was recently constructed as part of the library project that incorporated infiltration basin, infiltration into the groundwater right outside from the runoff that is seen from the library and the surrounding streets and neighborhoods. We also have the opportunity to do habitat restoration and wetland restoration as part of this, and so there's plenty of opportunities and there's plenty of, there's a number of projects that are currently underway that are going towards those goals. Here's a wonderful picture of our Seymour Water Course. As you can see, we've, this is one of the more prominent areas, not the only one, but one of the more prominent ones that was addressed recently and we're still currently working through with stakeholders. The policies that we have as part of this will help promote green, green infrastructure and restoration projects. As a side note, as part of our NPDS requirement, we are also putting together a green infrastructure plan, which formalizes the city's efforts in implementing green infrastructure. We also have groundwater management policies that will look at, will need to closely look at seawater intrusion, saltwater intrusion, and the quality of our groundwater basin. As far as developments, you know, moving, continuing with our efforts with, that we see through NPDS, which is reducing runoff, minimizing impervious surfaces, the use of Best Management Practices, or BMPs, during construction and post-construction, and avoiding land divisions and grading on steep slopes, which will help with water quality, sediment transport, and whatnot. Another need that comes from the policies is the update of our flood mapping, and for very limited cases, we have allowing the alteration of natural water courses is a possibility as part of our policies that we'll talk about in more detail moving forward. And that's it for me.
And Commissioner Benjamin will wrap up this section as well.
Thank you very much, Maz. So once again, the question is how does this shorelines and hydrology area tie in with the rest of our local coastal program? And while there are many, I think that the easiest way to think about it is to think of these, what are affecting processes as geomorphology? That is, there are ways of thinking about how the land is changing. And with respect to hydrology, as Maz said, you know, drainages are picking up bits of soil and bringing it down the hill. That's colloquial thinking for what they refer to as sediment transport, and it's dripping in and slow, having a much slower flow of water that is subsurface, that's the groundwater flow, and those are, those are healthy. However, if there's too much water and it comes down too fast, we get flooding. If it takes too much of the soil, as it runs down, we get erosion. If the soil is brought down and then suddenly gets to an area where it's slow and that soil settles down, it can result in sedimentation. They could lose a, a natural resource. That's what happened to the Pilar Cito's Lagoon over a period of decades. It's a well-known problem in Pescadero, because that also results in a loss of flood carrying capacity, and so it can aggravate the flood problem. So those are examples of how our choices for hydrology and water quality affect the hazards chapter. As Maz mentioned, there is the problem of saltwater intrusion, and when the, when the drainages have overflowed their banks, they've brought sediments and healthy nutrients into farmland. So there's a clear connection between the way the water flows and our agricultural processes to ensure that there is not saltwater in our wells and to make sure that flooding processes happen when they should. The ancestors who lived in Half Moon Bay before us, the Indians who lived here, chose this place because there was a place where you could get water, and there was a place where you could grow food or find animals that would eat there. So it will come as no surprise that the locations of the water will be related to our cultural resources chapter as well. And of course, we think of our streams and our ponds and our beach as beautiful, so we certainly regard them and the riparian corridors that grow from them as important visual resources, and we want to visit them. So it's going to influence our coastal access and our recreation area. And clearly, for the reasons that Maz mentioned about how we design the location and features of new development, it's going to have an impact on the choices that we make in our development chapter. So as with the biological resources, I think it's important, as we consider these chapters, that we realize that most of the customers who will be affected by the choices that we are making in this plan have not been born yet, and the processes that we're going to try to understand and guide will play out over their lifetimes. So I urge you to try to take the long view as you read through this document.
Great, thank you. That concludes our second presentation on the other two sections of this chapter, and we are happy to take clarifying questions from the planning commission now, but also it's another opportunity for public comment.
Is there any clarifying questions?
When you talked about the bluff erosion, and I know there's two kinds, one is where the waterways are kind of pulling things back, but there's also from the ocean bluff erosion, and my understanding is that there was a lot of Half Moon Bay that had streets mapped and streets that existed that aren't there now because of the breakwater that was put in, in the harbor. You know, 1950, that breakwater wasn't there. So are we coordinating what we do here with whatever studies may or may not be being done, that coordinates the projection of what, I'm assuming we're in the process of eroding our, where the bluffs are eroding is different now than it was 50 or 60 years ago because of that breakwater and the patterns of the ocean and the waves. So are we coordinating that with other studies that have been, any kind of projections? Is there a mechanism to do that?
So, should I answer? Yes, we are coordinating our efforts with Best Available Science on bluff erosion. One of the best resources for Best Available Science right now is developed by the USGS. It's called Arcos, Our Future. There's a public interface, I'd be happy to send you the link, where you can zoom in on your area of interest and run through different sea level rise scenarios, and it'll actually show you projections for bluff erosion as well as shoreline position. So that's with varying levels of sea level rise, one, two, three meters, as well as 10, 15, or 20-year storm surges. And king tides, yes, thank you.
And just, I want to follow up on that. USGS reached out to us and other San Mateo County communities, and we had a recent meeting just in the room over there when this dividers ended, and we looked at their new maps. And so they're actively working on engineering and updating their predictions. So Best Available Science is a moving target. So what we can map in this plan, we, we need to acknowledge will change while the plan is still in the books, and we'll have to just keep up with it.
Jimmy, do you have any clarifying questions? Okay, none for me, so we can open up the public comment period. I've got one card here from Sarah. Over.
Hi, I'm Sarah Polgar. I actually have more of a question, and with respect to the, I know that the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act can have a tremendous impact on us, because if they say that we're overdrawing, it could really affect our groundwater resources or our access to them. So, and it sounds like from, there isn't a lot of local ability to influence whether they will make that determination, so we may be at their mercy. And so what I'm wondering is, or an observation is that perhaps we need to have in our hydrology section, some more discussion of storage, water storage, because it could be that we are, we just don't have the water resources we need for, especially for ag, and so that's an important consideration. I do think that'll be difficult to add, you know, just knowing how difficult it is to do any kind of new, kind of make, building ponds essentially, that could be really difficult with a lot of the natural resources we have and the kind of species that we have to do, work with in terms of permitting. And so that's just something to be cognizant of, I think, but it's something we may need to face based on, I was pretty surprised to see that the groundwater basin was considered potentially a high priority. That's scary, because it isn't. So that was just something I wanted to mention. And I do think that it's also worth noting that, that in your discussion, that the fully protected status does apply to San Francisco Garter Snake, which also adds some complexity to some of the permitting we're talking about, not just for like a development, but even just restoration, anything. So there's a lot of challenges in terms of doing anything in San Mateo County, particularly because we have some of these, these fully protected species. But that could be a challenge for some of the hydrology and water quality, et cetera, like restoration work that the city is working with different partners. like restoration work that the city is working with different partners on. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Next speaker, Lenny Roberts.
Hi, I'm Lenny Roberts. I didn't really intend to say anything, but Sarah reminded me of some information that I think might be useful in terms of the groundwater basin question. The permit for the Pilocitos Quarry, which is now a Vulcan, has, it's a long-term permit. And the ultimate process that they're going through is excavation of, of a deep, a deep excavation into the resource. And they will end up with a large water body. And they have an agreement with Sematillo County and the regulatory agencies that they will be storing the water that gets collected in the, in this deep reservoir. And they'll be releasing it into Pilocitos Creek during the summer months for enhancement of the habitat of the creek. And it will also help with groundwater recharge, because the Pilocitos upper watershed is part of the supply for the lower Pilocitos groundwater basin, where there are a number of wells, including ag wells and wells for the ocean colony, else course, and others. So this is not going to happen in the next five years, but it is a long-term process that I think you should maybe include as a consideration for the long-term health of the, of that particular water basin. Thank you.
Carrie Burke.
Thank you. Sarah and Lenny hit on a real important topic. And that was on the groundwater extraction that caught my eye also, on policy 6.125. And it speaks about regulating development or eliminating from frigging extraction. And of course, concern whether agriculture, it would be considered development. Now I'm married to a farmer and we also have a well on our ranch. And, you know, nobody would intensely want to overdraw their well. But of course, I, you know, we still need to understand, you know, what this policy really means. And I agree, the new state groundwater management plan could have some significant impacts to Sematillo County, including the city of Half Moon Bay. And so I think that this is a real important area for us to really study, but also to be proactive, that whether there's more storage, whether there's going to be alternative crops with climate change, as Commissioner Benjamin mentioned. I mean, this is a dynamic situation and there's just so many different policy, you know, different areas of the plan that are going to be interrelated. So, but this does potentially be significant to the agricultural community. And I just hope that we would have enough time to, and also be open to other strategies that could help, that we would have enough water for all the land uses, appropriate land uses that we need to support. Thank you.
Thank you. Staff, would you like to respond?
I think we just want to acknowledge with the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act and the receipt of that notification, multiple agencies, we all sat down together with the Resource Conservation District, this was Coastside County Water, the Water District North of us, I'm Karen, and city and county staff. And we have done a lot of number crunching and responses to, to their supplemental about that. We're concerned about it, obviously. We disagree with it from what we know to be true. And we will keep the, we're just waiting though, you know, because we've all submitted letters. So I just don't want to leave you hanging that we haven't responded. And I appreciate you bringing that up.
To the chair. So good comments from the public. Thank you again, all three of you. I will just say, one, if you haven't Googled it, you might want to look into One Water, a model that talks about integrated thinking about water. And I think personally, I find it an appealing approach to thinking. We have a tendency on the coast side to segment who thinks about storm drainage from who thinks about wastewater, from who thinks about drinking water, and who thinks about groundwater, nobody until now. That's why there's such a big law there. So I think there's, in some ways, an opportunity for us to do a little bit of holistic thinking. And planning over the long term gives us a chance to think about what the regulatory landscape might look like during the timeframe of this plan. It would not be the first time in California that some of the different governmental agencies got together to solve a problem as challenging as water storage in a window of time where we don't get to build a lot of stuff and there's not a lot of money available and the amount of rain is suddenly too much and too little at different times dramatically. The example that comes to mind was the Southern California town that built a water storage system under their high school football field with the cooperation of their school district. And what a, what a great opportunity to cooperate. And I'm not saying that particular example is the right one for us, although I noticed that the high school is right next to a historic drainage, just saying. So there, you know, it'll be interesting to see how some of those opportunities play out. But I think it's a chance for us to do some good, creative, responsible, out-of-the-box thinking without compromising our biology. One of the side effects of doing that would be at the high floor periods that pose risks of flooding or aggravating erosion and sedimentation downstream, we might be able to get a better supply for the ag uses, drinking water uses, and a more regular release of water, such as what's proposed in the quarry. So I think that this is a, it's good to see the challenge, but it's also good to see it as a burning platform to motivate better planning in the community.
So from a policy standpoint, not sure whether it goes in here or somewhere down the road, development. Every few years, there's a gray water question coming up. You know, there's a lot of water that our sewage plant kind of spills into the ocean. But at times of drought, every, every so often, we hear the question, why don't we use more gray water for agriculture, for the golf course perhaps, and places like that? Where would that come in? Would it come in here? Would it come in somewhere else?
You'll see recycled water policy in the Public Works chapter, which will follow development.
Okay. Well, yeah, again, well, I just, I want to say I really appreciate the sort of change in language. Jimmy, I know you've been interested in that for a long time. So switching from ditch to water course, I think words matter. And I think water courses and more accurate representations, especially for something like Seymour and areas where there are really, really, really good opportunities for restoration. It's hard to advocate for restoring a ditch. So with that, I, yeah, thanks staff for the work here. Appreciate some of the attention to restoration and actually using water for some beneficial uses, including restoring habitats. But I've got no additional comments here. And with that, we can close the study session and turn it back to Joe. Or you've got next steps, yes?
Excellent, thank you. We appreciate everyone for coming and staying for these presentations, making comment. And of course, always our Planning Commission. So for next steps, we do want to remind everyone just one more time. It's what's on the ground that matters. And what's very important also is what is going to happen with these policies as they, as they move forward and go through the Planning Commission and the hearing process. They'll move on to city council. And then the plan will eventually go up to the Coastal Commission. But how do they get implemented? We just want to make sure that people understand what the end game is. You can kind of reverse engineer what you're reading about and where we're trying to go with it. So the policies are going to guide your implementation plan, which is your zoning code, a subdivision ordinance, and numerous other studies and guides and standards that the city relies upon to conduct the work that is, that is done out, out and about town and for doing development review and maintenance and operations. We will also have guidelines. And we're talking about how to maintain guidelines that are flexible and move forward. Just as we were talking about how Best Available Science is a moving target, best practices have been moving along with regards to how we protect different species, different habitat areas, this water storage concept that we need to really work into this, et cetera. And then education. We really think it's critical with keeping this community informed about what the city's doing. And that's why, and Brittany talked about it, I've talked about this before, it's why we worked really hard to make this document readable and so that you can really find things in its structure. But beyond that, the website suggestion that Vice Chair Holt had for getting our maps up on the, on the website, those are the kinds of things that we're really looking forward to doing. We'll get there. We have a bit to do between now and then. And so this, this is, just moving through this process here. Again, we encourage input and feedback. And there's no close of any comment period right now. We know we had a few people who were stressed, who were stressed that they had to have all their written comments in today. I'm not sure how that information was conveyed to them. So help people understand that this is an open process. The documents are online. We continue to offer to meet with interested parties. Our next study session is scheduled for December 19th. There are four chapters in this document that we're hoping to cover. It's ambitious. We'll, we'll see how we do. We're covering coastal access. I've got feedback, I'm sorry. That's off. There we go. Thank you. Coastal access and recreation, scenic and visual resources, coastal hazards, and cultural resources. So we're, we're looking forward to covering those. And we'll, we'll get as far as we can. We'll break it into small bites. That evening, we're going to convey the development chapter. And I'm going to remind everyone again, it's, it's going to be a draft and we're hoping to get lots of input. So you'll see us back here. We'll be in the library on December 19th. And that's a special meeting. It's a Wednesday. That's, I think, place and time. Think of it, it's a Wednesday in the library. It is in our typical thing that we do with the Planning Commission. And that concludes our study session. I do have a brief, did you, something? Okay, I just wanted to, while I have the microphone here. We're going to have a better mic system. We're experimenting with this space. And we're going to see, we're going to try it out for about six months and see if we like it. For Planning Commission, we're expecting to have larger audiences as we go through the rest of this document. And the space does accommodate that a little bit better. But we're still getting the bugs out. And so if you have feedback on that, we appreciate it. That said, our very next meeting in two weeks on December 11th is going to be back at the EOC. It'll be our last meeting there for the year. We're going to be looking at two city projects. The Highway One North Signalization Project at Terrace. It includes a span of the East Side Parallel Trail, which is a bicycle and pedestrian trail, as well as an extension of Frontage Road. And there was an environmental review of that project. And the other one is the Parks Master Plan with its initial study, mitigated negative declaration, which, so that's also its environmental review of the Parks Master Plan. And so it's meaty. Both of those environmental studies are posted on the website. And you're welcome to, to take a look at those. And I'm going to skip the rest of my report for tonight. I think that's plenty. Thanks.
Great. Any Planning Commissioner communications to report? Seeing none, we can move to adjournment. Do we have a motion to adjourn? Sure. That would be a motion to adjourn.
Second.